Everyone, it's seven o'clock. I would like to call to order the Cohasset Select Board Meeting of Wednesday, November sixth, two thousand and twenty-four at ninety-one Sawyer Street, Willcut Commons. This is an in-person meeting. It can be viewed virtually on Facebook Live, on the Zoom link, which is at the back of the agenda, or on Cohasset one four three TV. If you wish to speak, please make sure you come up and you state your name and your address for the record. Can I have a roll call, please?
Already present.
Ellen Mar, present.
Jack Creighton here.
David Frung, present.
Great, thank you. I'd like to invite everyone to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Hi, Mr. Plux arrived. Thank you. Okay, public comment. Is anyone here for public comment? Yes, please come on up.
Hi, I'm Rich Heinz, thirty Clay Spring Road. I'm currently the electric chairman of the Board of Directors for the Council of Elder Affairs. I viewed last week's meeting on one four three TV. I can't find any select board request to speak at the meeting last week, and since then, I've been in contact with the chairperson. So we had made that contact. I regret not regret not being at the meeting, and sorry that my absence caused such disruption. I want to apologize for misunderstanding concerning our ten twenty-one executive session. Also, personally, I'd like to say that I'm quite pleased with our new director at Elder Affairs. I meet with her quite often, and I find her very smart, a lot of good ideas, and she takes feedback very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? No? Okay, so we'll move on to the RTF update. We have Mr. Glenn Pratt here.
Good evening, Glenn Pratt, Emergency Management Director. An update since we were here last week. We have the site has been inspected by a licensed environmental site professional. The environmental cleanup that was ordered was accomplished. The demolition of Alex Metal Garage and Office Building has been accomplished, and the material has been removed from the site. Temporary power has been restored to the site. Temporary underground power has been brought further along for the new way we're going to run some of the operations up there. We do have a generator in place that we're going to need for certain operations. And tomorrow, we expect to have the office trailer in place for the employees to operate out of. There is a IT, Ron Manad and his group are working on a plan to restore the IT technology, fiber, cameras, scale operations, communications, internet. That's still a little bit off. It's not going to be ready when we open Friday. In general, the rest of the site has been cleaned up, tidied up. We've rearranged some of the ways we're going to have to operate. Last weekend, Brian Joyce was able to work out with the Situate DPW for Cohasset residents to use their transfer station, which worked out very well. I don't know if anybody had a chance to go there, but it's pretty impressive. It's our entire transfer facility could fit in one corner of the facility, but it worked out very well. So we had thought we might open today. We couldn't do it, so we're opening Friday this week. But we know recycling all trash will be commingled, and we have a waiver from DEP to bring that material temporarily to the incinerator at C Mass in Rochester. So there'll be the recycling you bring, but it won't be separated out into bins like it normally is. There's a limited, we're restricting how much construction type trash could be brought in there. Only one barrel each, and everybody will still have to have their blue bags, which will create some sort of controversy, no doubt, because if we try to put the recyclable material in there and paying for more bags, but we'll deal with it. Today, one of the things that we took advantage of by not opening today was that we were able to train and work with the staff there on the new procedures and the way things will have to be done temporarily. And of course, during the week, as you might imagine, we've had many visits from insurance company and their consultants. So good to go for Friday. One of the things that's working on the non-operational side is that Chris's office, Michelle Leary, they're working every day with the insurance company and our insurance adjuster. One of the things that I had brought up last week that I was here is that this is not going to be an inexpensive recovery. We certainly have whatever insurances we're entitled to, and we'll get every nickel of that, I'm sure. But there are a lot of things that we're going to have to pay beyond that. So we're going to have to give some thought to what we put together for town meeting, and when we do that. I think that Chris has notified advisory board and capital budget that this event has happened, and that it's going to require money from someplace. We are spending money every day right now, which is why coming up next on the agenda is a request for emergency declaration, for a state of emergency. I think Chris was saying you're easy earlier. It helps us out with spending money and getting things done. But it'll be many months for sure before insurance money comes in. In the meantime, we need to be able to keep our vendors paid and be ready to move and be able to pay for all these unexpected things that turn up. For example, by throwing all the recycling material in the trash, we don't know what that's going to do to our tipping fees and our hauling fees, how many more trailer trucks we have to send out. So there's going to be always money clicking up, clicking up, and we would ask you to give us money, get us some money as soon as we can, so that we're able to move ahead with the recovery in anticipation of what we get for insurance, and just doing the things that are going to need to be done anyway. We have an incredible roster of vendors that have been helping us, regular vendors of the town. They've been working weekends, they've been overtime, doing anything we need. So we certainly have open payment terms to them, but we can't keep them waiting. You know, we need to, we need to pay them timely, whether or not we have insurance money. So I would encourage you to give some thought to how we can, how we can get some money available to us sooner than later. You know, maybe the December town meeting might be an opportunity to push a little something in there to get it going. But I would think that anything less than a couple hundred and fifty thousand dollars is going to probably require us to come back and say, I know that's not the kind of news anybody likes to hear, but this is not for the faint of heart, this recovery. So any questions?
We'll start, Mr. Plux. Any questions?
Any information about what might have caused the fire?
I've not seen the report for the Fire Marshal's Office this weekend, I think. No, the Fire Chief hasn't circulated.
Mr. Grady?
No, I have no question.
Mr. Creighton?
Do you have any idea exactly how much?
No idea.
I mean, if we said like one fifty, I sense that's not enough, but two fifty.
I don't know. You know, Chris and Michelle have been working different, different pieces of the numbers. We do have a trash operations consultant helping us, because some of the ways that we operate are not going to be able to do in the future. Things we had to change around, things that are offline. So, you know, they're coming up with some great ideas. Brian Joyce and Kyle Sastino and them spent a lot of time today going over alternatives and checking out what we did have. You know, what we do find is that some of our equipment ready for this is not state of the art. So the fixes are not cheap. So anyway, but we're working on that, too. So I hope next week we'll have more information on that very question. What do you think? Yeah.
I'm just trying to figure out what it is that we could do tonight to help you over the hump right here, and how much.
Well, yeah, Chris is going to have the, hopefully have the declarations, so he'll have some moves.
What's a procedure if we need to give them money?
We would, we would allocate it from free cash, right? That's the only place we have money.
So the next item on the agenda, declaration of emergency allows us to take alternative steps, including, when I say deficit spending, I mean spending without allocation in advance, which I think is going to be the easiest answer, because we just don't know. And I think, as Glenn was alluding to, we had already brought on a consult to look at modernizing the operations, and this presents an opportunity to do just that. So I think it's the comeback, something to hopefully, you know, early, early in the cycle, early January, about four, with some ideas about what we could do to make changes to the facility, which would increase costs. So I don't, don't, we're still in the very early stages. We're only in the second week plus. So but the bridge declaration will provide us the financial tools.
Just wanted to make sure that you don't have to situate.
I think the declaration.
Have your hands tied.
Yeah, I think the declaration saw that.
Yeah, I, I, I think I had a little confusion, because Mr. Pratt mentioned special town meeting, you know, and we're closing warrant tonight. So.
With two hats.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that. So when we get to the warrant, there's actually a new slot in the it's a, it's a fifty thousand dollar allocation account, a budget for free cash.
Okay.
Which we can amend that town meeting if we need to change it.
Okay.
We should have better information over the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
At the same time, I think the declaration itself will allow us the financial flexibility to be able to, to, to take action without, without committing too much money.
Okay, thank you.
Just to be brief, but thank you of everyone else on this. I was, I personally was able to survey some of the damage myself up there. I'd say there's no loophole with this going forward. And the cost will back up, so I guess I want to make sure that, which I imagine is the case, but that our vendors are being paid on time. Because due to the emergency, we want to make sure that they are, because if there was an emergency again, we want to make sure that we could be so safe that if we, going forward, if we, if we need more money or it has to be allocated, town suggests we do so if we can come up and report it. Just so that we can make sure as we go through it. It's going to be a long time before we see anything from the insurance company, so to stop that gap. Thank you.
No other questions? Okay, thanks, thanks very much. Okay, so as has been mentioned, we have a town of Cohasset Declaration of Emergency. We need to adopt it and vote. And although we all have it in our packet, our audience does not, so please bear with me as I read through this so that everyone is aware. So Town of Cohasset Declaration of Emergency, whereas on October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, there was an explosion and fire at the town's recycling transfer facility. The facility located at ninety-one Cedar Street in Cohasset, causing extensive damage to the facility, and whereas the facility serves as the sole public collection facility for Cohasset residents to deposit recycling trash and other household waste, and whereas the Select Board in consultation with the Town Manager, Fire Chief, Director of Public Works, and Director of Public Health for the Town of Cohasset, has determined that the facility in its present state presents a major disaster, which poses an immediate threat to public health, safety, and general welfare of people residing both within and outside of the Town of Cohasset, and whereas the Select Board, the Town Manager, Fire Chief, Director of Public Works, and Director of Public Health for the Town of Cohasset, have determined that immediate public action is needed in order to prevent or minimize further risk of harm to and among the people of the Town of Cohasset. And whereas it is critical to take additional steps to respond to, repair, and restore the facility for use by residents of the Town of Cohasset, and whereas declaring a state of emergency will facilitate and expedite the use of resources to protect persons from the impacts of said fire at the facility, including but not limited to emergency expenditures pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section thirty-one, limitations on operating hours and public access to the facility, and making alternative arrangements for the collection and disposal of household recycling and waste, and whereas the Select Board, Town Manager, Fire Chief, Director of Public Works, and Director of Public Health for the Town of Cohasset, recommends that a state of emergency be declared for the Town of Cohasset. Now, therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Cohasset, Massachusetts, hereby declare that as of October twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, a state of emergency exists in the Town of Cohasset. This declaration of emergency shall remain in effect until further notice is given pursuant to our judgment that the conditions leading to this declaration no longer exist. Okay. Mr. Senior, do you have any additional comments on this?
Not only that this was processed from our town council, so this is.
Their, their language.
This is their language with a couple of.
Okay, any questions from the board? Okay, so, yes.
If we could just clarify, so what this does for us is it makes available the tool of deficit spending. Any other tools we may consider using as a result of this declaration?
It allows us flexibility with procurement, it allows us flexibility with financing, and it also allows us to spend the proceeds coming from insurance for the purposes rather than have to go through a town meeting allocation. There's actually a cap, I believe it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on insurance proceeds, they have to go to town meeting, less than something like this. And we're going to go over a hundred thousand dollars just on the front end. It just, it just a set of tools that allows us to be more flexible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Nope. So may I have a motion to, for the Town of Cohasset Declaration of Emergency?
So moved. Second.
Okay, so Mr. Creighton moved it, Mr. Grady seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Okay, next up, license and permit. Yeah, we, yeah, we have a copy here, so we'll, we'll pass it around and sign it and get it back to Tracy. Next up, change of manager for Lenny's Hideaway. We have the application in our packet, I believe. Is anyone here from Lenny's? It's five minutes early. Okay. Does the board sense that we wait for them, or I will entertain a motion that we move up boards and committee appointments and updates to seven seventeen and license and permits after that?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we will move on to the Historical Commission Representative to Community Preservation Committee to fill an unexpired term until June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. Carol Bestick is the Historical Commission's Representative to CPC. You're welcome to come up if you'd like to say something, or we can just. I'm sorry? Okay, so can I have a motion to approve Carol Bestick as the Historical Commission Representative to CPC?
So moved.
Mr. Creighton moved it, Mr. Plux second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now we have a sewer department update from Mr. Bill McGowan.
Evening, everyone.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome. Where would you like me to start?
Wherever you want. We just, general overview of what's been going on at the Sewer Department, how the membrane replacement is going. Any issues, concerns you might have?
Some of our metrics that we do manage, and I will tell you that I did test your toilets here, and they work all fine, so. Right now, we have
Yep.
We have sixteen hundred and forty-eight users. This is not to be confused with an EDU, which is the things you seem to be running. These are places of business, these are homes. It's up a little bit, but not a lot. Our daily process flow is above three hundred and twenty-five thousand gallons a day. We can do a high of about four sixty. And I'll send this to you if you'd like to, as a, as a copy. We have done much more, but frankly, the lack of rain is helping us. We don't have the INI, which is basically leakage through our sewer systems and things of that nature, which is keeping us down, which is helping our processing and, and what have you. Last week, our average daily flow was two hundred and fifty thousand gallons, which again reflects the fact that we don't have rain. We get a ton of rain in, and I'll talk to you about Jacob Meadow in a minute, because that is a project that is ongoing, and that'll help us quite a bit. Our design capacity is four hundred and fifty thousand gallons. We've done a million. That's with a lot of work from Woodren and Curran, and I pass my compliments to them. It is a twenty-four hour weighted average, but we can do it if we have to, so we don't have to do a discharge. Our nitrogen, which is measured by both the state and in the U.S. EPA, is approximately ten milligrams per liter. We're supposed to be in the seven. I'm sorry, our limit is ten, but we are at seven right now. Now, seven milligrams per liter is outstanding, given the fact that this is the time of year where everyone is fertilizing their lawns. You know, everyone's, I've said this before, I think to the one or two people that came to the music circus to hear me speak a couple of years ago. Everybody who washes clothes, uses a dishwasher, anything, they produce nitrogen. Anybody who fertilizes their lawn produces nitrogen, and all that goes into our system. So we have to get rid of that. And we are penalized to some extent if we don't, and we're actually doing a hell of a job. And again, my compliments to, or not my again, my compliments to Woodren and Curran, who are running our system, because they're just fantastic. I would never go anywhere else. Our membranes, we bought a new one about three years ago, did not work. And it failed us pretty much from two weeks into it. We had a long negotiation with the, with the vendor, which is a combination of companies, Suves, Veolia, Xenon. And I'll give my compliments to Michelle, who helped us quite a bit in the negotiations and, and all that. We get a new membrane the first week of December. That will be craned in, and then hopefully, we'll get that thing running by the middle of December. So we'll have two working membranes, which will lower our effort as far as just everything that the Woodren and Curran guys have to do to maintain our system and also give us a higher capacity if we ever need it. I was thinking, you know, because I, in my typical job, I usually give myself a mark, not mine, myself a mark, but the Sewer Department and, and what they do. If I was giving them a mark out of one through ten, I'd give them a nine. We're working with a plant that is well over twenty-five years old. We have a lot of things that are put together with, you know, Band-Aid and bubble gum, and we're still doing it. And so I, I'll just to questioning if you have anything. But that's basically where we are. We're doing very well. Obviously, knock on wood, but if the water table goes down, or I will say, we are going through the process of an ARPA fund for, to basically seal off Jacob's Meadow. There's a pipe that runs from the harbor up. We want to seal that off, seal all the manhole covers, and that's going to be worked on. Once that happens, that really does protect us for our saltwater coming in, because we do at times get a tremendous amount of saltwater coming into our plant. Not only does that add to the burden of chemicals and work, but saltwater degrades machinery that we're passing it all through. So it's all cumulative as to what we do and how we do it. But we are doing a hell of a job. Any questions?
Plux?
You mentioned the work on Jacob's Meadow. I understand the interest in limiting saltwater coming in. Would that have any effect on the town's ability to drain rainwater out?
As far as I know, no. Now, while they're doing, well, actually, what they're doing is they are sealing all the pipes, so there's no water coming in. If they wanted to drain water out, they open up a manhole cover and it goes right out. I mean, it's pretty simple. In my simple mind, it's pretty simple.
And, and then Ellen, if I might, I have a second question.
Sure.
Yeah.
You mentioned that the current facility, while it is operating well, is held together with Band-Aids and bubble gum. Something I worry about often, and I know my colleagues do as well, is the big chunk capital investments that are coming our way. So if, I know you don't have a perfect crystal ball on this issue, but if you had to predict at what point we would need to start thinking about major capital investments in the sewer plant, how far off would you say that is?
Hopefully, it'll be two years after I resign as a sewer. I don't know. I would say that the way we're doing it, we have replaced not only the doors that actually, I mean, we actually had problems with the doors because of the corrosion that comes out of it. We couldn't open them and close them, so we replaced those. It took us four years. A lot of the machinery inside, we've replaced a grid screw, this grid screw and some other devices, which I won't bore you with. So we're actually doing all right. I think at some point in time there's going to have to be a study to say, okay, does it stay here, or do we move it somewhere? And it's probably not the best place, because with the water table raising, or rising, excuse me, in Cohasset, it's, it's going to be inundated at some point in time. And there have been studies done by Woods Hole that came through the town to move our generators up about ten feet above what should, could be sea level, to move our processing and actually where the inflow tanks and all that to protect them from getting seawater in. So there is a plan in place to do that, which would keep us running for a while, but at some point in time, we'll get inundated. And I have no idea when, and I have no idea what that would cost, but it would be substantial.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Grady?
No, I have no questions. Thank you so much.
I just to tack off with a slight word. Lex had asked, are you able to budget effectively moving forward regarding the improvements in the plant to be moved forward for the plant?
Yes, we actually take out of our operating budgets a hundred thousand per year, which we didn't have to go to the town to pay for the membrane. So we kept that in a fund, knowing that at some point in time, one of them was going to, you know, perish, and it did. So we were able to pay for that. We pretty much budget all of our, all of the replaces, all the replacement devices by ourselves. Now, do we go out to the community? Do we go out to the town and get money? Yeah, once in a while we do. But it's not all the time. I don't have a crystal ball to tell you exactly what it is, but I could do that if you wanted.
Okay, Mr. Creighton?
I'm outside. Thank you, by the way. I know what Scott said. Never mind. Thank you very much. I know.
Well, I know you're on your mind. It is absolutely glamorous job in the town. I'm lucky to have two great commissioners with me, so.
I have kind of an off-the-wall question. Is there any program of regular inspections of sewer connections in town at the residential level?
Not regular, not, not, you know, sort of, we, we proactively do that. It's basically our operator. When people have an issue with their grinder pump primarily, they will do it. Now, they will actually inspect. It's sort of happened now. They actually will inspect our, our sort of hard sewer systems, so all of the manholes, all of that. They actually do that. And part of our capital plan is they'll come back and say, hey, you need to do this, or you need to do that, which is why these guys are the best we've had in years. But most of it is people calling us and saying they're, they're E one pump, or, you know, whatever it is. It's not, yeah, the alarm goes off, but I would say eighty percent of the time, you just flip the switch and it's just an electrical pulse. We are having F R Mahoney, who sells these, come to us, I think, the next meeting, just to look at certain things of what they can do to help us with the system. But right now, it's working fine. I mean, I'll probably, probably will drop that tomorrow, but it's, it's working well. I mean, the systems are set up so that if there are any problems, the alarms to the user, they call us, we go out, check it out. And if there's something really bad, we call up F R Mahoney and they go.
Well, the, the reason I ask is my, my counterpart in Situate mentioned to me that they have implemented a program upon the sale of a resident of a home that part of the inspection processing includes the sewer connection, and they found that a lot of additional groundwater was going through the system because of connections that had eroded or whatever, and they've been able to save a lot. I, I don't know if you're familiar with that program.
I am, but they do a lot more of septic systems and sort of groundwater discharge systems. We do not. So we're trying to set our system to the grinder pump, green things that are in everybody's yard. They are more susceptible to user error than they are to water and all of that. I, I could bore you for about two days of all the stuff that people throw into a toilet. And it's everything from Rolex watches to Q-tips to, you name it. And that jams up our system. I know that, having talked to Situate in the past, they've got a lot of problem with just their water table is higher than ours. And so their, their septic fields or leaching fields cannot get rid of the water the same way we can, for those who have. So it's a little bit of a.
A little different.
Yeah. Yeah.
For North Cohasset, a part of the flow goes to Hall. It has to be in agreement. So I just want to know, when does that agreement end?
Four years.
In four years. And when would that start to be renegotiated? Two or one? Give or take?
I would say probably pretty soon because it's I, I think we should start as soon as we possibly can. We have a new town manager there. Who I think is more receptive to working with us, and it's a matter of how much that we actually want to. There's a, what do we need just for North Cohasset? What do we need for other systems? I mean, we're pretty much tapped out right now with our capacity. And we keep some for emergencies or things have to happen. But if we were to add more home drill or more, just anything, it'd be hard. So I think we have to talk about that, and I suspect you're going to be want to, want to be involved in, okay, how big do we get?
Great. Thank, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay. So it doesn't appear that we have anyone yet here from Lenny's Hideaway. We have the application in our packet. We can approve it without them, or we can defer this to the next meeting if the board so desires. Anyone? Is that appropriate or no, Chris?
I, I just want to pass a line. Tracy, correct me if I'm wrong, as of today, we have still, this police is still not able to contact the actual owners. And that's generally part of the process. They've done the vetting of the manager, but they wanted to tie the, close the loop with the owner, and the owner has still not been back in touch.
Okay, so I would like to recommend then we defer this change in manager unless anyone on the board has any objections?
No, I'll agree with that.
No?
And I might add my sympathies. Chris Senior trying to contact them. My understanding is that there's residencies and there it's been an issue before. So if somebody doesn't come before us, that raises questions.
Okay. So we will defer that, that sewer update. The next item, one Pleasant Street for affordable housing configuration. We also need to defer this item?
Yes, I spoke with the planning director, Cassandra Thayer, and she's working with them on, on an update to their request, which I think should come fairly soon. Hopefully, you can have it for the December 3rd meeting, I think.
December 3rd, okay. Okay.
Because they can't do anything without your approvals. They can't get C O S or anything, so it's incumbent on them to get this all together.
Okay. So we're waiting on them for
I know, I think November 19th.
November 19th.
There's another local action item for Elm Street. It's the old Habitat project. Where needs to sign off on.
So we'll do them both on the 19th? Okay.
I just want, I just got a message from
Yeah. Okay. However, I think that doesn't negate the fact that we haven't been able to get a hold of the owner. Okay. 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 All right, so Mr. Hipwell is on his way. We have chief. Can you promote? Chief, is he there? Is the board okay with this change?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been problematic trying to locate the owners. Last we knew, they're, they don't even live in the state anymore. And we've had a, a meeting about this before, so we're not exactly sure who actually owns the place. And, you know, what Jack referred to a little while ago is, is accurate. We, we've had this problem before and, you know, we're not exactly sure if it's a straw ownership.
Okay. So so the application isn't complete because we don't have ownership validated.
We, we can't speak, we, we can't reach out to, we can't get the owner to, to see if the owner's even on board with this.
Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll wait a minute for Mr. Hipwell to arrive. Other than that, the application seemed pretty straightforward.
The person's fine. We're just concerned about who actually owns the bill, owns the business. Who's he working for?
We must have their EIN number so we could look it up on the Massachusetts Business Registry.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's been a whiffy of excuses.
Okay. Mr. Creighton?
While we're waiting, I, I think that that this has come before the board various times over the years, and it's always hard to get the answer. And then for something as crucial as a liquor license, I think the public really wants to know who's running it and who's the actual owner. And certainly if there's issues that the police department has. But I'd really be a lot more comfortable if we do actually who owned it. You know, lease, who's on the lease and things like that. So I look forward to asking.
So the A B C C license number that's on the application, is that a license number, that's a license number for the owner or for the entity? Do we know?
What type of number is it?
It's on the application, so it's public. 04370-RS-0238. It's the A B C C license number.
That's going to be, you know, that, that's, it has to be from the A B C C, but again, we're not confident they even live in the state, that they're in California as far as I know. We, we had a tip on this about a year ago, and we, we came before the board. We had the owner, they, they zoomed in, but you know, again, I'm, I'm not sure the last time they've been in state, and they, they moved. They sold their house and left over a year ago.
Okay. Is it against regulation to have an owner that is not a Massachusetts resident?
They're ultimately responsible, and they told, they're, they're telling us they're, you know, they're, they're our ownership is, is not proper.
Okay.
Excuse me, foreign ownership is not, foreign, by foreign, you mean out of state?
They, they, yeah, they live out of state. They're, they're supposed to be, when, when they requested the license, they promised to oversee the day-to-day operations of this. It's at one point, you know, the owner was listed as the manager. And we, we found that, you know, he, he wasn't there. He wasn't there a majority of the time. As a matter of fact, we found that he sold his house and left the state. And there was really no manager. There was just an employee working, you know, acting as the manager without permission from the board.
That was my recollection, because I recall the meetings from this, this, which is why I think we're starting to see a, a pattern of, we have a liquor license, and we don't know who actually owns.
I, I mean, this is a, we, we just need to have, we need direct contact with these people, have them to the police station and answer some questions for the detectives. You know.
Okay.
We can't get a hold of them.
Okay.
Chris, we did have someone on the Zoom raise their hand whose name matches what's on the application.
So do we, we can promote them? I guess Chief Derek Burke is on, online?
I think that, that they're, I, I think that Stephanie, I believe, is, is one of the owners, or was, we're not exactly
Definitely, yeah, Stephanie and Derek.
Okay. I, I just be interested in where they're, where they're at right now.
Right, Mr. Burke, are you there? Or Ms. Burke? Are they promoted? They're promoted, and they're not responding? Okay. If Mr. Burke or Ms. Burke would unmute your device so we can hear you, that would be appreciated.
Yes, sir. At this point, I, I think we're starting to get a bit frustrated with the process.
Yeah.
Through your fault. Appreciate the chief's input, but would we advise the applicant that they need to have a conversation with Chief Quigley? And then we might put this on the agenda at a later time.
Yeah, I was just, I was just going to say that, even if Mr. Hipwell does show up. Chief, we thank you for your time. We are going to defer this item until you're satisfied and all requirements for the application are completed as they should be.
Thank you. Yes, we just, we just have to figure out who's, you know, who's in charge there.
Who's in charge, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
This is deferred. Okay, so next up is special town meeting review, discuss, discussion and vote. First up, town hall update, the Collins Center, Mr. Senior.
Megan joined? Has Megan joined us yet? I'm not sure. You're, you're right.
Oh, we're
Quite early, which is good.
I'm talking quite fast.
That's fine. So she was getting her kids to bed, so she's probably, she was thinking about, we're going to be close to eight. So, I, I mean, I can tell you that a good conversation was had at the Collins Center. Monday, I was not able to join that Zoom call with Megan and Cassandra Thayer of the Department. They had a good conversation about what a study might look like, and they're putting together a scope of work, which they hope to get to next week. And I think Megan can explain it in detail.
Okay, so why don't, why don't we move on then and then see if she joins us by the end of this section of the agenda? The Citizens Petition Amendment Town Manager Act. I, we have Mr. Kears and Ms. Nothing here. Thank you for coming.
Okay, Japanese, 65B Wheelright Farm.
Paul Kears, 39 Old Coach Road. Thank you for, for having us in front of you. As we are aware, the Cohasset Elder Affairs Board was seeking a remedy to which their opinion in selecting a director would be weighted and have a higher level of merit. We came to this board to request a committee to be set up to review the Town Managers Act, in which we felt the input from our board and all seniors in town would have that weighted merit. The board voted three to two against the request, so the only option we felt we had at that point was to file a citizens petition as a placeholder while we went off and studied the Town Managers Act. Since then, we have reviewed the Town Managers Act. We've reviewed also the Massachusetts Council on Aging, which is a nonprofit on behalf of the state, their guidelines for effective boards. We also presented our issues to the advisory board, in which we received really good input from them on helping us think through what we needed to do to understand whether or not we changed the Town Managers Act. We also worked with the H R department, specifically Megan James, to seek a policy that would satisfy our primary concern. So we received revised published policy from the H R director that seems to be the remedy that we were seeking. I believe all of you have a copy of that, and it's up on the website as well. We believe this policy to be a great start and look forward to working with H R in an effort to make all the stakeholders more effective with the Cohasset Elder Affairs Board. Taffey wanted to speak to, specifically to the H R policy that was published.
Yes, as you know, that was our biggest complaint, was that we thought the process was not appropriate for the appointment of a director to such a large department. And it wouldn't have been appropriate to any appointment, really. But after we discussed with you, having a working group started and you voted that down three to two, going to the citizens petition was our only alternative at the time. I think that the discussion that we had here had a good follow, because at the next meeting of the select board, the H R director reported on how the relatively new H R department was planning to function, including working with town manager appointments. And since then, subsequently, we just received a copy of a document entitled Hiring Policy and Procedures, Town of Cohasset. The document is not dated, and I don't believe it's been reviewed by the select board at this point. But it, as Paul said, we feel it is a very appropriate document. It involves the committees at a couple of good places. In the beginning, when the requirements for the position are being discussed, and then with input on the people being interviewed, but it does leave the town manager making the final appointment. As I said, this document was not followed in the process. But we realized that changing the Town Manager Act is a big deal. And so we are looking to the board for assurance that these hiring practices and policies of the town will be followed in future appointments. So that's what we're coming to.
So if, if we can get that insurance from the board, then we would respectfully postpone the article indefinitely.
Mr. Grady?
I would be the first to endorse that.
Mr. Creighton?
I couldn't hear what he said, Mr. Grady. Sorry? Oh, you endorsed it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. And I think this is a good example of what happens when everybody in the town is committed to good government transparency and working together. So unfortunately, it kind of went off into a little bit of chaos, but now that we're back in there, I think it's a great idea. And I commend the, the senior board and all the seniors for looking at this and looking beyond immediate strife and discord into a good solution moving forward. So I'm 100%. And again, thank you and thank you to all the senior board.
I guess my question is, will this be something that the select board will review? This policy that came out, is that within the purview of what you're saying?
I think we have at least two votes and three of us haven't spoken.
I know that you just received it.
Yeah, we did. We just, we just received it today, and we have, have Megan online. I, I'm not quite sure if we have purview over H R policies, but I certainly think that there's an open to listen. I did read through it. Mr. Kears had forwarded it to me, and I agree. I think, I think it's a good first step in consistency in, in doing it and understanding that there's, there's, not every committee is involved in every director hiring, because it just not, it doesn't function that way, but I think it does provide guardrails. Guardrails. I was going to say guardrails, but that was the word I wanted, but, but, but guidelines, so, so that voices are heard. And I, I think it's, it's been posted, and as long as I'm on the board, I will do what I can to make sure when we have openings that we follow the steps. And I, I can only speak for myself. Mr. Grady?
Well, to a degree, obviously I endorse it, as I just said. That will basically become classified anyway. You know, even future boards, because it's part of policy, because it's part of policy. No one needs this or wants discord between any of our committees or groups. So again, I'm very comfortable in saying that. Be happy to back it.
Yeah. Mr. Plux?
I agree with my colleagues, and I also want to say I appreciate your engagement and your effort on this and all the things related to the senior community here in Cohasset. It's, it's a great community, and that's because people are engaged and put in a lot of effort. The last thing I'll mention is that at any time, if anything related to this policy or anything else seems a little off or you have concerns, I will volunteer myself and my colleagues, thank you, to be available to work with you and to hear it out and help out.
I second his motion.
Mr. Frog?
I, I would agree with what everyone else has said, and I think there might be a few minor edits to it, but I think it's a great start. I know we had gotten it a few, over a month ago, when it was put up on a slideshow, and this was the physical conference that we received today, so like I said, there might be a few minor changes to it, but I think it's a good direction and certainly a sensible way to go through things, so.
Thank you. We, we do have this on our agenda for November 18th. We had submitted this to all of our board members, along with the MCOA recommendations, which does clearly state the guardrails for our board on, on a statewide policy that they have. So I do want to say, though, that I've worked very well with Megan James on all of this. From the stages of back in June. From the stages of back in, uh, June all the way to now, um, she's been really terrific, um, helping us understand, um, what the department does, what the town does versus what, um, volunteer committees and boards do. Sometimes we don't know what the requirements are on the other side. We just assume they are and that's when you usually have that level of conflict. So, I think that, um, with our new director, again, Meg Stewart, um, has been fantastic because, um, she is, um, putting in the extra effort to go out and learn, um, the more, um, about elder affairs specifically, uh, even though she's had great exposure in her prior, um, work where she engaged with other departments. It's different when you actually run, right? So, um, the best thing was that she attended the annual event, um, in Massachusetts for MCOA, which is usually a, a three-day event. And our, uh, assistant, uh, director, she went as well, um, and they were able to kind of work the room and get all the information they need. It was really specific to elder affairs. So, I'm really happy about that because she'd only be on the job for a little while, not understanding, um, you know, going out, um, I forget, it's usually in Western Mass, but, um, it's usually a two-day event, three-day event. So, both of them, um, have been working together. So I think that, um, we're on a good path. So I'm, I'm really happy.
Mr. Creighton?
Uh, Madam Chairman, would it be appropriate for the select board to have a, a motion of understanding that we, we endorse the idea of working cooperatively with this, with the, uh, Board of Senior Senate, that appropriate sense of the sense of the.
I don't, I don't know that's specific enough, um.
And we're just saying that we wouldn't be specific.
Yeah. I I, I, I'm sorry, on which issue?
On cooperatively, um, regarding the management or the selection of, of the HR policy, something.
Oh, I, I think, I think, I think we've all, all agreed to, to that, um.
Do we even need a motion?
I don't, I don't think we need a motion.
It only, it doesn't need to be specific to us. I think we need transparency.
Yeah.
More transparency in all appointments. And I think that this is a good step to having that.
Agreed.
And we'll see what comes, you know, what comes down the line.
Right.
You're already working with, with Megan. She's already made one presentation to you already. I know she's coming back.
Well, already doing.
Right, right. So, um, yeah, there she is.
Yeah.
Hi, Megan. So, um, thank you very much for, for coming this evening and I appreciate, um, all your efforts. I've, I've had a conversation with Mr. Kears and, um, Mr. Plax said it, we would like to move forward, um, you know, collaboratively, um, with the Elder Affairs Board. Talked to Mr. Kears. I'd be happy to come with a little notice to a meeting to talk about anything you want to talk about, to provide any kind of training, um, that, um, anyone might, you know, desire to have, um, whether it's, you know, open meeting law or taking minutes or, or, or anything along those lines. We have resources that can do all of that, but, um, when you think it's appropriate, I'd be happy to come to a meeting.
Yep. Just say this.
No.
The wording, I just, they're gonna ask me to.
So just for clarity's sake, would you just articulate one more time how you intend to handle this pending your
Right, so, so, um, we are going to postpone the article indefinitely and I don't know. I, I believe we have to do that on the floor.
On the floor.
That from here.
Yeah.
Um, so I know that you had a vote on the article, advisory needed to vote on the article, but they postponed their vote. Waiting for us to get back to them. So at this point, we'd have to go to the floor and just postpone the article.
Sir Senior?
So when the motion pack's prepared, if you could get materials in advance, we can put something in that saying that the elders would recommend, you know, after we'll stop it. So it's clear. So I'll just, I'll just move that along. So it's still speaking. So if you want to, if you can get that to us maybe the week or so before a town meeting. We're gonna, this is gonna be on the eighteenth, did you say?
Our board meeting is the eighteen.
I question whether that has to be. I mean, this was a citizen.
It's a citizen.
From the C A board. I mean, I'm the petitioner.
Yeah.
The lead petitioner.
So we just have to look at the structure of how we do that.
Yeah.
I, I would suggest that the other affairs board's position on the issue would carry a lot of weight.
Yeah.
Okay. It's gonna need a lot of explaining.
That's, that's okay.
A little fashion in your thing, this is what I go.
Well, we'll, we'll get through it. And the informational summary and the, in the motions distributed at town meeting, you know, are critical for getting everyone to understand, you know, what's going on. So.
Well, I have one more question. Is the rest of your board, because we ran into this at one point, another issue last year, uh, is the rest of your board comfortable with the petitions? Comfortable with, with drawing a petition indefinitely?
I have no idea, frankly. I was the petitioner. Uh, as I already explained to you, I had less than forty-eight hours to gather signatures. I got a hundred and thirty-seven signatures. I, uh, I, you know, and we just decided over the weekend to do this. I haven't talked to anyone about it. And as I say, I think there's gonna be a lot of explaining to do on my part and Paul's part. Um, so I guess it would be good to present it at the board, but it's a lot of seniors out there who aren't on the board too, so.
We, we've started the legwork on that by, um, we sent out the, um, it's, it's a forty-five page document from the state office of, of, uh, Council on Aging for them to read, uh, which, which clearly defines our role. And also sent out this policy, uh, to the board as well. So we'll speak to how those two, um, go together. Because one of them, um, is on the town side, which in the MCOA document clearly states that the town is, handles personnel matters. And usually, uh, elder affairs boards are, are more advisory and not action related to telling the director what to do. We don't, we don't direct the director, right? So, um, I think they'll understand that. Uh, I, I think we'll get a lot of questions, which is fine. Uh, we got a lot of them from advisory. You know, it's just six people and we had probably twenty-four opinions. It, it was helpful. It really was helpful.
Yeah.
You know, because it challenges your line of thinking. Can you support it? So I, I think.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Megan. Hi, Megan.
Good evening, everyone.
Evening. We were, we were running ahead, so we were ki- kind of skipping around this section of the agenda. Um, and so, Chris, we opted to kind of hold off on the conversation about the Collins Center until you could join us.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate that. Um, so this past Monday, um, my, myself and, uh, town planner Cassandra Thayer met with the Collins Center. They have a newly constructed public innovation design studio. So we were able to meet with some of the folks who were part of that. Um, and Monday's meeting really focused on, uh, a possible project scope for us. Um, the mission of our project is to review the town's current workflow. Um, the communications, our workspaces, our document retention, um, and digitate, digitization. Um, we're looking at these topics to reimagine them, um, to improve, um, accessibility and, and flexibility. And that's for staff and the community regarding, um, the services that we provide. Um, and just some examples of, of things that would be improved, um, workspaces are, do, are they virtual? Maybe, maybe not. Um, information and documents, you know, where are they located? Can we improve on searchability on those things on the community side and our staff side? Online systems to better provide customer service and streamline processes. So it was just a beginning conversation on Monday and, you know, I am interested to hear the select board's feedback about some of the topics that I just covered, but, um, I think it was a good start to kind of moving towards what does a twenty-first century public service uh, look like? And, and how can we, um, utilize that in Cohasset?
Mr. Grady?
Megan, fantastic work. Uh, just a question for you because as you know, we've got a town hall working group to a degree, uh, pointing. So that's probably where the Collins Center to me came in. Is reimagining the physical and what's gonna, what's the best utilization of that space? You know, is, as, you know, how do we reimagine forty-one Highland Avenue? I just want to make sure that's in there, you know?
Yeah, absolutely. So it's not a coincidence. Absolutely. Yeah, it's not a coincidence that we're looking at this project and, and, um, and looking at different things at forty-one Highland Avenue at the same time. So, um, we'll see what comes of this, but, um, I think these projects will definitely go hand in hand.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Great.
Yeah, um, you know, I I watched part of that, uh, meeting of the working group. One of the things, one of the members, I forget who it was, um, did have a question. If they don't have the actual number of town employees and whether the employees are, are presently cited, which makes it very difficult for them to understand how we do that. When I emailed, um, Mr. Senior, uh, Town Manager Senior with that, he informed me that would be something that we would get from the Collins Center. And I was just wondering, do you have some idea when we, when, well, not so much the board, but I'd like to do this, but when the town hall working group would have the
Sure. So I can, I can send those all to, um, the group. Um, we have not only, we have org charts that are in the final draft form, but I'd be willing to share with the, with the team so that they can start doing some research. Um, and also we've been working on a job requisition project aside from this, but, um, that will give us the data that we need that I think the working group would be able to utilize as well. Um, so that's, all those documents are either finished or in the final phases and I'm sh- I'm happy to share with them, with everybody so that we can move forward with the work.
Excellent. There's a very hard to plan, plan with your new town hall when you don't have the number of employees and where they're working. So that would be, thank you very much.
Well, we have that now, so I can certainly send that along.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Frog?
So, Keith, on the Collins Center, you know, that's primarily known for town manager searches and superintendent searches. Um, beyond that, you know, the website, they have a number of different government reports that they've done in a number of different, uh, areas. Uh, but regarding sort of this, which is space utilization, um, that sort of wasn't there. So you're saying this is sort of a new, within the Collins Center that they're, they're sort of creating scope and looking to do things or is that right?
Yeah, so, you know, we, Chris and I reached out, um, to Mike Ward and he, we didn't know about this new innovative design studio. Um, so we were just happy, happy to hear about it. And, um, so this would be probably one of their first projects. And so this is kind of a, a new branch, um, of the Collins Center. So we're excited to work with them. Um, they're interested in this, this type of scope.
Uh, and, and in addition to the comments that, uh, select board member Grady made, um, not just on forty-one Highland, but maybe the scope could be the all of our, our town offices. Uh, you know, for space utilization, because if there's other, uh, places in town, some are to be more public facing, some of them be more, more behind the scenes, is to look at them all and maybe where people are now and where they should go in the future. Uh, is that gonna be a part of the scope too?
Absolutely. Um, and another thing, and I'm not saying this is right for Cohasset, but just along this line of thinking is they're, um, talking to another community about installing kiosks, um, when maybe a staff member can't be there or to have something else in addition to a staff member. And again, I'm not sure if that's a, a fit for Cohasset, but that's kind of the line of innovative thinking that's going on, um, about providing services.
Great.
Mr. Grady?
Uh, I just wanted to make my, it's, uh, I may have been remiss. The town hall working group, and Megan, you're probably aware of this, and Chris, I know is, it's, it's at some meetings is, that in that group, that's why I appreciate the Collins Center. We are trying to reimagine every building in Cohasset owned by the town. You know, as far as that. So I know you're aware of that, Megan. So I may have been missing informing the board of that. We are looking into every building and every possible use of space that's, uh, that has the best fit for the town.
Mr. Plax?
Nothing to add. Thank you for the hard work. I'm glad we're getting the call in center.
Yep.
Great, thank you.
Final, uh, uh, thank, thank you. And I would say that, um, you know, to move things and to look at the scope that can bring Cohasset into the twenty-first century regarding delivery of its government services is most certainly welcomed, at least from me and I'm sure other members of the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. We look forward to, to updates on this. Um, you may or may not know, I had a very positive experience with the Collins Center. So, um, yeah, I hired, uh, in the process of hiring a superintendent of schools, um, I thought they were outstanding. Um, and I, I think you'll find them to be very timely and effective communicators with you and responsive to, to your inquiries and, and your questions. Um, so we look forward to more, more updates on this. Um, screen?
Thank you.
And I might add that, um, I've run in the Collins Center and they are kind of the state of the art, um, evaluating various town managers and, and positions in that. So very, very well respected. People who are on there tend to have actual experience working on this. So this is right what they do.
So we have a, a placeholder for funding for this on the warrant. Is that correct, Mr. Senior?
Yes, it's, uh, it's in the article.
Free cash?
Four, yes.
Okay. And so we think that number's okay?
That's what we're using now. I don't want to hide that.
Yeah.
For it to be one of their first, first, uh, projects, we want it to, you know, it was their very best.
Right, they should give us a discount.
So. But there is, there is.
Okay, all right. Excellent, thank you. All right. So, um, that's done, that's done. Next up is article to petition the state for five additional, um, all alcohol on-premise licenses. So, um, we have the language in the warrant. Um, we all got hard copy of the warrant tonight. It's article, um, Article nine. So as we talked about with the growth of the town, we've had the same original fourteen all alcohol licenses for ad infinitum. We, we can't find any records of having asked for or received additional. And based on the growth of the town, the economic, uh, revitalization downtown, what's going on at the harbor? Um, and the fact that thirteen of the fourteen licenses are out there and approved and the fourteenth is, uh, pending approval. This board felt, um, that we should, it's a good time with the legislature reopening in January to petition for additional licenses. Does anyone have any questions? The language comes from town council, correct? Yep.
Yes, I'm, I'm gonna bounce it back off them one more time to make sure we're.
Okay. Mr. Plax?
I think the language looks great. Just caught a title that I'll share with you offline.
Mr. Grady?
No, I think it's fantastic. I'm glad we did it.
Mr. Creighton?
Um, I don't know if we need that number of licenses, but I think it's appropriate to, um, revisit it. I would recommend it that we bring it to the town for their discussion and approval.
Okay. So can I have a motion, um, for Article nine petitioning the legislature for additional all alcohol annual licenses?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's five to zero. Okay. That was the only new one that was on the, um, warrant. Uh, we have review and vote all remaining articles for special town meeting. Um.
Madam Chair, if you
Yes.
Change it to Article three, um, there's a new line in there that I mentioned a lot earlier, it's gonna be early conversations.
Yep.
Thousand dollars from free cash for capital stabilization fund.
Okay.
Probably at this point, uh, not actually targeted, but effectively targeted for the RTF potential. That may expand depending on what we learn now and, um, December ninth.
Okay.
That said, that, that's a placeholder that you hadn't considered for, if the board would like to do that, I
Okay.
Vote to.
Okay, so Article three stabilization funds, project number two, do I have a motion to allocate fifty thousand dollars from free cash, um, to the capital stabilization fund?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And you also need to do Article, uh, six, which is capital provenance, capital that you didn't vote on.
Okay, um, just on, on, on this, on Tracy, it says select for project one, it says six oh, it should be five oh. Article three. Thank you. And five oh for project two. I'm sorry, Chris. What was next?
Article six. Capital.
The capital improvement plans.
I believe that. You have any specific questions? I believe that Michelle is online. I'm, I'm, I'm physically.
Okay.
So the capital is now voted on all of these. There are three projects for water, two at a school stabilization and one is just out of capital stabilization. It's effectively a repurpose of money that everyone's meant to put under the projects.
Okay.
They're all recommended you have a statement about it.
Okay. Water commission voted three oh for their projects. Advisory six oh for project four. And one out of the general fund. Does anyone on the board have any questions?
No, other than I, I watched the capital budget meeting regarding these and they asked plenty of questions and obviously the vote reflects it, so.
Okay. So can I have a motion to approve the capital improvement projects from Article six? From both the enterprise fund and the general fund?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
So that's projects one through five for the enterprise fund and project one for the general fund.
So that according to this Tracy, that's all done, right? That's all I have?
Article ten.
Oh, right.
Yep. Article ten.
That's right. Article ten was held with wind.
Yes.
Was the information that we provided to you sufficient?
Absolutely. So when we were discussing last week, it was a question of, of why something like that would exist in the Cohasset.
Yeah.
Bylaws. And the answer is it's part of Cohasset's participation in the Green Communities Act. So I would strongly advise against not doing anything to put that into jeopardy. Cohasset benefits greatly from its participation in the Green Communities Act and all the associated programs. So I am fully in favor of the amendment as proposed.
Okay. Any questions from the board? No? Okay. So can I have a motion to approve Article ten amendments to Article ten point one, wind energy?
So moved.
Seconded by Mr. Grady. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for that research, Mr. Plex.
Cassandra Thayer did the research, but thank you.
Oh, thank you, Cassandra Thayer. Okay. And I think, I think that's it.
So what you need to do is you need to vote the final warrant with any edits that we have done. Just as last week. So I'm going to add an information summary to Article one two.
Okay.
In economic development and in our local business community, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay.
I'm happy to bounce that off you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
And then you need to go to publish the warrant. And that means it goes into the, goes to production level of that answer constantly.
Okay. So it, it's two votes, just so I'm clear, a vote to finalize the warrant with the edits and a final council run through. Correct?
And then to close the warrant and authorize it, authorize it, close and publish it.
Okay. So can I have a motion to approve the draft warrant as presented tonight? With final edits and council review?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. May I have a motion to close the warrant and publish? Am I saying this correctly? And publish for special town meeting, the draft warrant as presented tonight?
So moved.
Second, by Mr. Plex. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Done. Thank you both very much for all your work on, on the warrant. And if there are any additional, we'll, we'll speak as a board later about if any of us want to get up and talk about any of these articles in, in support of, and/or if anyone wants to help write informational summaries, I'm sure Mr. Senior would appreciate that. Chris, I'll take a stab at the all alcohol one and send it to you. The liquor license, yeah.
We've done that.
Huh?
We've done that. Have at it.
Okay. All right. So next up's town manager update.
So three quick updates. One, encourage everyone to sign up for the town's new emergency alert system. It's called RAVE. You can do it on the, on the website or through social media. It's a way to get text messages and phone messages and emails about things like the RTF or if there's a storm coming or something like that. So it replaces the old, it was called reverse nine one one. It's called RAVE. It's something that is used widely around the state. It was a recommendation of the state emergency.
Chris, what was it called?
It's called RAVE.
R A V.
It's not a rave party, but it's so, but it's basically an emergency contact system. So again, I would, and we have the senior center at least once a month does a special sign up. So seniors, you know, because it can be a little bit, some of the tech stuff can be a little bit, covers some of the signup. They do assistance at least once a month. So you want to stop by the senior center.
I'll need help.
You can also stop by our office if you need to help someone out. So that's number one. Number two, Veterans Day is Monday. The annual ceremony of the G L S at school essay contest winners will take place on Monday at eleven AM. The ceremony weather permitting will take place outdoors at the Veterans Memorial Park. So that's Monday, the eleventh, at eleven AM. And there's usually a lunch for all of these, all, all the communities are invited to the ceremony for sure.
Is, is Mr. Mahoney the emcee of the event?
Yes, I mentioned the service officer.
Okay. Okay. So as I had mentioned to you, I will, I will be there and, and make very, very brief comment.
Okay, that's my, my question. It's like word members. But.
And I'll obviously.
Yeah, every, yeah, everyone's invited. Okay.
And, and again, it's that time of year, next Thursday, in this very room, we'll be holding our fourth or fifth board and committee recognition. And thank you. So that is, it's desserts and coffee. Starts at six thirty. It's informal. I mean, you know, bring, bring a friend, bring, bring, bring a significant other, have some, you know, mingle. If you could sign up, it would be great just so we have some idea of the head count. And then it's really just a thank you. So we encourage everyone on our, our more than two hundred plus board committee members have all been invited to, to, to come. So, so we look forward to that. And then it's almost Thanksgiving, so. That's my whole flip.
All right. Select board comments, Mr. Plex.
No comments tonight, but I would share with the board that I am currently in the process of signing up for RAVE. It's very easy to find on the Cohasset website under register for meetings here. So thank you, Chris, for letting us know.
I'm actually in the process as well.
Mr. Grady, any other comments? Select board comments?
Just one. I'm just really glad that we were able to put these small differences behind us, elder affairs. I just want to thank you both. No one wants to sanction, just transparency, Ms. Northnagle, I agree with you a hundred and twenty-five percent. So I'm just glad we're moving forward in a positive direction. Just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Mr. Creighton.
Yeah, I echo that and amplify that. It's been very challenging for the seniors community, the conflicting views. Was there really lots of support for all the good work that you do? And you worked through, and I know there's a lot of difficult behind the scenes meetings amongst you. And you're all to be commended for your hard work and also for your ability to move forward for the betterment of the whole town. Thank you very, very much. You've done well and you've made Cohasset proud.
Mr. Farag.
Great. Thank you. I just wanted to talk about last week in between the board meetings that we had. We had an incident in town regarding a swastika that was put on a political sign, towards a Trump sign, you know, Cohasset. It became not only state news, but national news because of, and because of that incident. And also outside of that incident, there was also parts of political sides of both, both sides that were stolen during the process of our electoral process this year. So I would, I could say that hopefully, you know, people can behave better on that front. Regarding the incident, one of the things about Cohasset is that we're nonpartisan in the boards that we work on. And there's people with various diverse ideologies, backgrounds and what have you. And we're all able to work together through all the years of the different boards that we've had. That's one of the great secrets and recipes of the success of Cohasset. Of a symbol that was put on that side, came to Cohasset, we must announce it, condemn it, and have a swift response against it. I could say that personally, my family, my mother's side, came from the Channel Islands of England, which is the only piece of British property that was taken over by the Germans during World War Two. And was occupied from nineteen forty-one to nineteen forty-five. My family had, that side had to flee that part of England in order to get away with sixty thousand German troops. And unfortunately for those who were Jewish faith, they were systematically rounded up and sent back to the prison camps and death camps in Europe. Not to mention the labor camps that were on those islands and are still learning about those today and unearthing some of that. The reason I say that is that here in Cohasset, many of the families also have their own histories regarding World War Two. We have the Veterans Memorial downtown on, by the harbor, which has the names of those who perished during World War Two, who gave their lives from Cohasset. None. And also those who served in Cohasset, all the Cohasset families have their own stories to come to. And for any of those who want to learn more about this, also in Boston, there's the Holocaust Memorial, which is next to Union Oyster House, which has the numbers of every Jewish person who perished in World War Two. So whether the person is of Jewish faith or any other faith, and also our general community and the elderly couple was a part of the incident that happened last week, everyone needs to know in Cohasset that they are welcome and that they are safe in our town. And finally, thank you to our police who were on the job on this and within about twenty-four hours, they were able to resolve the matter, make an arrest and then have an arraignment. So that, that is my comments on this. But again, when we do get this, it should be announced and condemned as fast and swiftly as possible by the board. And I do thank the chair for putting out a statement at the end of the week. Because it wasn't between our board meetings where we weren't able to be regarding this. So thank you.
So speaking of which, Chris, the statement indicated that the board had not voted for public statement. Should we take a vote or is it a moot point at this point?
I mean, that's entirely up to you folks in a sense, as well as statement. What wants to endorse the statement you made, you could.
Okay. Does anyone feel compelled that we should endorse the statement?
I would, I would, I think we should just vote on the statement that you made. Now we're behind it.
Okay. Okay. Because it was articulated, because as you said, we were in between, we were between meetings. So it, it, it came from me without, without the approval of the board. That was the opening line. So if I could have a Well, I was just going to ask for a motion and then he can make the motion.
Well, I know that.
Can I have a motion, please, to endorse the statement that was put out last week in response to the sign incident?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. So the, I, I should have said this during the RTF presentation. I want to thank our, our friends and neighbors in Situate for allowing our residents to use the facility. And it was very neighborly and I know a lot of townspeople appreciated it. And I appreciate, you know, what, what they did for us and, and someday we can return the favor if so need. That's what neighbors do. So thank you to everyone in Situate for accommodating Cohasset. That's all I have on that. Next up is approval of minutes for ten twenty-nine twenty-four. Mr. Farag, you had a comment?
Yes, I just asked to be deferred until the next meeting.
Okay. So Mr. Farag has asked for a deferment of these minutes. Can I have a motion to that effect?
So I moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We will move, move those. Okay. I don't have topics not reasonably anticipated. Anything else? Oh, so we have upcoming meetings Wednesday, November, oh, that's tonight. We have, we have executive session Tuesday, the twelfth, seven PM. It's executive session only. We will open in a live meeting and move into executive session and close the meeting in executive session here at Willcut Commons. I just want to make sure that's on everybody's calendar. And then our next meeting is on the nineteenth. Have a motion to adjourn at eight twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.